Okay. For the record, I would like to announce Governor's Northerns Amendment 28 to the House Bill 29 adopted at the Virginia General Assembly 2020 reconvene slash veto session allowing boards to meet virtually during emergency declarations. The amendment provides that a public body may be met. Public body may may meet by electronic communication without a quorum of the public body or any member of the governing body physically assembled at one location. When the governor emergency and the emergency makes it impractical or unsafe for the public body to assemble in a single location. And the purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact business statutorily required or necessary necessary to continue operations of the public body. An emergency declaration was issued on March 17th, 2020 under Governor Northerns Executive Order 53 due to the coronavirus COVID-19. As a part of the order, temporary restrictions were placed on restaurants, non-essential business and all public and private in-person gathering of 10 or more individuals were prohibited. The Portsmouth redevelopment Housing Authority Commission, October 15th, 2020, virtual special meeting will be used in Microsoft Teams to facilitate the meeting. All right. Welcome you all to the Portsmouth redevelopment housing authority, PRHA Board of Commissioners meeting held on the third Thursday each month, originally at 5:00 PM, but today we have it at 1:00 PM. All meetings are conducted at PRHA's main office, 3116 South Street, Portsmouth, 23707, unless otherwise noted. All members of the public are welcome to attend. Madam Secretary, can you do the roll call please?
All right, Commissioner Barham. Commissioner Jigges.
Present.
Commissioner Prince. Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Wicks. Vice Chair Lalonde.
Here.
And Chair Smith.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
All right, commissioners, before you have the meeting, the minutes from September 17th, 2020. Is there any unreadings?
Recommend a motion to approve the or approve the
Second.
Second.
Oh.
Motion properly second, Madam Secretary.
All right, Commissioner Jigges. Yes. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lalonde. And Chair Smith.
Yes. All right, new business. Old business, I'm sorry, any old business plan?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay. New business. The bond issuance presentation update by Council, Delphine Carnes Esquire and Delphine Carnes Law Group, PLC.
Good afternoon.
Hello, how are you?
I'm well. Can you, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, thank you so much for having me. I'm Delphine Carnes, I'm an attorney and I have been working with housing authorities for approximately 18 years. And I have been asked to assist the Portsmouth Housing Authority with a proposed bond issuance with regard to which you will receive more details for your upcoming meeting in November. So for today, I wanted to give you a brief overview of the bond issuance process because I am not sure when the last time was that the Portsmouth redevelopment and housing authority issued bonds as a conduit bond issuer. And I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the process. So today's just an overview, there is no vote for you on any resolution with with respect to a particular project, but there will be next month, a specific project presented to you. So housing authorities are allowed to issue bonds, so that's why we call you a bond issuer. But that doesn't mean that the housing authority is involved in the ownership of the project or the management of the project or the repayment of the bonds. As a matter of fact, as what we call a conduit issuer, the housing authority really is just an intermediary. And that means you don't have any exposure, any liability for the repayment of the bonds. And neither does the city of Portsmouth and neither does the Commonwealth of Virginia. So this is really for you a pass-through transaction where a developer would typically approach the housing authority and see if the housing authority would be interested in assisting the project by issuing the bonds. And that would really be the extent of your involvement in the project, it would be the issuance of the bonds. Developers do that because if they use tax-exempt bonds for a housing project that will include affordable housing units, and if those bonds are tax-exempt because the project meets all the requirements of the code and a housing authority issues the bonds, then they can also obtain low-income housing tax credits. They do not automatically qualify for 9% low-income housing tax credits, which are the competitive tax credits, but they can automatically qualify for the 4% low-income housing tax credits. And that is why we typically see those transactions where either the construction or the renovation of affordable housing involves a financing structure that includes both 4% low-income housing tax credits and tax-exempt bonds. And so it is advantageous for the developer because it helps bring different resources, sources of funds to a project to make it feasible. And the way the process works is that the developer would approach you and describe their project and the location of the project. And then there would be what we call an inducement resolution adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the Portsmouth redevelopment and housing authority. And it would set forth the maximum amount that is expected to be the bond issuance amount as well as the names of the entities involved, a brief description of the project of the project. And it would reinforce again the fact that you are not, as the housing authority conduit bond issuer, you are not responsible for the repayment of the bonds. The next step after the inducement resolution has been approved is to go in front of city council because housing authorities can issue bonds only if they pass an inducement resolution and then city council confirms that this is acceptable. After that has happened, we work on the bond documents with council for the developer and bond council. And once the documents are all ready and the closing is ready to happen with all of the parties, including the bond purchaser and the investor who will invest in exchange for the right to claim tax credits, then we go back to you as the Board of Commissioners one last time. So really you see the project coming to you twice, once for the inducement resolution and then once for the final approval resolution right before the closing is ready to occur. And there are requirements by statute as to how these meetings need to occur, they need to be advertised because those are public hearings. So there are rules that apply with regard to notifying the public that the bond issuance is about to occur. And so we typically work with bond council to coordinate those steps. In the present case, I would serve as your council, so I would be called Issuer's Council because the housing authority is the bond issuer. And then there is a separate bond council that prepares the vast majority of the bond documents and works with the other funding providers to put the transaction together. And again, when we're ready to go and close, we come back to you a second time for final approval. So the sequence of events would be first, the developer submits an application to PRHA, then you have your inducement resolution in front of the board, then we go to city council to confirm that this can happen, we work on the documents, and at the end of the process, right before closing, we come back to the PRHA Board of Commissioners for a final approval. Now, why would you do that? Well, there are two main reasons why housing authorities do that. One is it meets your mission. Although the housing authority itself is not involved in the ownership or management of the housing that is the subject of the bond financing, it still meets your mission of developing affordable housing in the community and encouraging the increase in the inventory of affordable housing for your community. The second reason is that as the bond issuer, you receive a fee for your services. So you are not liable for anything, all of your costs will will be paid, including my costs as your attorney, but in addition to that, you will earn a fee. And the fee is calculated based on the amount of the bonds that you issue. The fee is equal to one-eighth of 1% of the bond amount, and it is paid to you every year, starting with the year in which you issue the bonds. Again, that's one-eighth of 1%. Those are not federal funds, meaning no strings attached. Those are funds that the housing authority can earn and use as it wishes, of course, in furtherance of its mission, but they are not like your typical HUD funds that come with a lot of strings attached and reporting obligations. These would be unrestricted funds that would be reflected in your financial statements as unrestricted funds. So it's a big advantage to you and really no adverse effects. As I said, you're not liable for the repayment of the bonds, you're not liable if something goes wrong with the project. We make sure the documents include the right language to exonerate you from liability. So this is a win-win situation. It helps revitalize the community and it brings you unrestricted funds which you can use as you see fit. So I see this as as a great system really for housing authorities and something that you should do more of if you have the opportunity. As I said, the borrower will be responsible for all of your costs. So when there is a developer coming to you with one of these projects, typically they make a short presentation to you. So I expect you will hear from the developer for the the next project, which I anticipate will be presented to you at your November meeting. Mr. Page can correct me if if that's not accurate.
Question. I don't see the chair. Yes, Commissioner Jigges, Ms. Attorney Carnes, is that your name again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm familiar with your presentation because I'm a former commissioner with the Economic Development Authority, which also has the authority to issue bonds. The one-eighth of 1%, refresh my memory, is that fixed? Or is it, could it be actually a greater fee income derived to us? That's my first question, I have two questions.
Sure, I can answer the first one. So, no, it's not fixed, but it is what all of the housing authorities charge around here. And so if you potentially charged more, developers could go elsewhere to get the same bond issuance.
Okay. And I think you may, I think you probably mentioned this at the beginning of your presentation, that the bonds actually will end up with a letter of credit and issued on the secondary market as investments, is that correct?
Oh, no, no, I was talking about the low-income housing tax credits that are that are used in in conjunction with the bonds. In terms of the bond placement themselves, they can, there can be a public offering for the bonds or a private placement. It completely depends on the circumstances of the project that is not fixed and the housing authority doesn't get to pick that part of it because that is something that has to do with other parts of the financing in which we do not play a role. So it can either be a public offering or a private placement, but I
Investment security on the secondary market.
It can be, that that wasn't part of what I had discussed earlier, though I was talking about combining the bonds with tax credits.
Okay, then I'm glad I mentioned it, that they can be packaged on the secondary market and have the letter of credit as as a backing on it. So thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I just have one, can you, can you, can you also mention that in addition to bonds that we're just, we're just not locked into Portsmouth, we can issue throughout the state?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. So you can issue bonds for projects located in your jurisdiction or in another jurisdiction if that other jurisdiction does not have a housing authority or seeks your assistance. So it it has to be by request. You can't just randomly issue bonds, for instance, in Richmond or elsewhere. However, if they seek your assistance, you can.
Awesome.
Interesting.
It's a good news.
Remember we had to do this before.
It's really a good source of revenue and and something that is completely aligned with your mission. Housing authorities do that and very successfully so.
Vice Mayor, you want to say something?
Yes, sir, thank you, I did. Hi, Delphine, good to see you again. I just wanted to know what do they have a total amount of the bonds that are going to be available for PRHA to be able to disperse?
So it it depends on the project costs and I do not have final numbers for the particular transaction that is going to come to you next month. I don't know if Mike Graff is on on the call today for Mount Hermon.
Delphine, let me just interject, the project that we had been approached by, it's about a $15 million total project. I don't know what the actual bond amount will be. There will be a presentation next month at your November meeting going into detail about the project. The the two points of contact for the developer are actually on this call. But again, we're going to go into a bit more detail about the project when they get to present at your November meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, any any other comments for Ms. Carnes before we let her go?
I do have one more question. That one eight oh one percent, if we wanted to be competitive, we could make, we could structure our fee rate lower, is that correct?
You could, in theory, yes. I don't believe it's necessary, but you could.
Well, I guess I wonder if it would be necessary because in this entire area, each city has a PR, I mean, a redevelopment housing authority, so that's why I was wondering.
Got you. Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Staff? No more questions, no more comments? Thank you so much, Ms. Carnes.
You're welcome. And if I may add, if questions come up or something else after this meeting, please feel free to let exec, your executive director know or Mr. Page and they can contact me and I'm happy to answer questions after this meeting as well. And if not, I believe I'll see you next month. Thank you so much.
Okay, I do have one more question. Ms. Carnes, are you based locally, where where is your office located?
My office is in Norfolk in the World Trade Center.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. I'll disconnect unless there's another question.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next item is MTW presentation by PRHA Financial Advisor, Lucinda Cindy Herrera. Ms. Herrera, you on the call?
Yeah.
You there, Cindy?
Hello, can you hear me? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hey!
How you doing today?
Great.
How you doing, Cindy? Good. Alisa, we're using Teams instead of Zoom, so I need to be able to access my screen to bring the PowerPoint up. Can someone tell me how to, I'm not sure if I just bring it up, if everybody's going to be able to see it?
If you go to the three dots.
I'm sorry.
More actions.
Go to, where am I going? Actions, it says more actions?
No, I think you have a share, doesn't she have the share with the arrow?
Mm-hmm. I think
Warm. I have something that says show, show device settings, show meeting details, show background effects, keypad, oh dear.
Open share tray, it's a box with an arrow that's pointing down.
I see it. Share tray, got it, got it, got it.
You see it, okay. Because I think warm.
This is it. Let me see if you guys can see them. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yay, good, okay. I usually use Zoom and they, each of these virtual meetings work a little bit differently. So, good afternoon, commissioners. It's great to see all of you again, albeit virtually. So this is the presentation that we did to the residents last night. I'll just kind of bring you up to speed, we've done a work session on moving to work back a few months ago. And we are now in what HUD refers to as step two, which is basically that we have to put together, we were selected to move forward to step two. And so now we have to put together what HUD is calling as our our vision and our plan. It's part of the 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 application process, step two of the application process. So the first part of that was to engage the residents. And so we had our first virtual meeting with residents last night, we had a pretty good turnout, we had about 40 people on the virtual meeting. They had great comments and asked some good questions. So I'm just going to quickly go through the PowerPoint that we shared with the residents last evening. And then I'll entertain any questions that anybody has. So this was the meeting we had at 6 o'clock yesterday evening. We went through the background of moving to work and just to remind everybody or for any new people we have on today's meeting, Moving to Work was created by Congress and implemented in 1996. It is a demonstration program. And what it basically does is it allows housing authorities to design and test local strategies regarding affordable housing and to be able to use local strategies on how we can create new paths to economic independence for the residents that we serve. What it really does to the housing authorities, it gives us a bunch of waivers of the regulations. So a lot of the traditional regulations that we currently have to follow and that our hands are tied by, we're allowed to waive those if we are successful in becoming a moving to work agency. And and the intent of waiving the statutes and the regulations is to be able to come up with the local programs that will help us better serve the residents of our particular community. The Moving to Work Agency currently has, there's currently 39 Moving to Work Agencies. And HUD has done an expansion and in 2020, their goal was to increase it to 100 additional agencies. There's a total of about 4,000 housing authorities across the country. So being a Moving to Work Agency is really a pretty elite designation. And so we're very excited to be able to have the opportunity to secure an MTW designation. There's three statutory goals under the Moving to Work Program that were set by Congress. The first is to reduce cost and find ways to operate our federal programs more effectively. The second statutory goal is self-sufficiency and it's to provide incentives to families to help them obtain employment and to become economically self-sufficient. And then the third statutory goal is expanding housing choice, increasing the housing choices that we can make available for low-income families. There are five requirements that remain as part of the program if we are selected. 75% of the families that we bring into the programs the first time must continue to be very low income, which is below 50% of the area median. We must adopt a rent policy that is going to encourage employment. We have to continue to assist the same number of families. When we enter the program, HUD will give us a baseline and we must continue to serve at least that number of families. We must continue to maintain a mix by family size. In other words, a Moving to Work Agency could not decide that they were just going to serve elderly people or just families, they have to continue to serve a mix of family types. And then finally, any housing that continues to be assisted under Moving to Work must still meet inspection standards. So those are kind of the five basic principles that we have to continue to meet. Under the expansion, as I mentioned, they want to increase it by 100 housing authorities. The housing authorities that will be eligible or that they will ultimately select, in order for us to get this far, we had to be a high performer. And then finally, HUD is going to make a decision as part of their selection is that they want people to be geographically dispersed. If you saw the map of where the current MTW agencies are, you see that there's about eight of the 39 that are in the state of California. So they're looking, and then there's a whole bunch of states that have no Moving to Work Agencies. So they're really looking to to diversify and have Moving to Work Agencies across the country. 50 of those housing authorities that they're going to select will be smaller housing authorities that have less than 1,000 units. 47 will be in the group between 1,000 and 6,000, which is where we fall. And then they're going to select three of the very large housing authorities. Important to remember about Moving to Work, it does not provide us with new money, it is not a mechanism that's going to provide us with any type of new funding. What Moving to Work does on the funding side is it allows us to have flexibility in how we spend our money. Right now, we have very rigid HUD regulations that say we have to keep our public housing money in public housing and our Section 8 money in Section 8. Under MTW, all of our funds get merged and it becomes a single MTW block grant. And so it allows us to use our funds in in different ways. And so that's kind of the beauty of Moving to Work is that it gives us much more flexibility in how we spend those funds, even though it doesn't necessarily give us any new funding. HUD has decided under this expansion, they're going to do four different study groups. We are in group number two, which is the rent reform group because the 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 housing authorities of our size, that's where they decided to put them. The small housing authorities are up here in group number one, and then the larger housing authorities are going to be in group three and four. So we fall into study group number two, so that means that we have to do a rent reform. And we'll go into more detail with our second meeting with the residents on exactly how that rent reform will work. But when I did the presentation to the board back a few months ago, we talked about basically looking at a tiered rent. And so part of the rent reform study will include a group of our residents that will be part of the rent reform under MTW. And then we'll also have a second group of residents that will remain under traditional rent process. And what HUD will do for a series of five years is they will study the two different groups to understand what impact the rent reform is having on the residents' lives as far as their income, their ability to work, to get to get more education, to go to school, to get better jobs. And so that's really what the purpose of this study group will be. These are some sample activities that we shared with the residents last night as we were talking and soliciting from them some feedback about what kind of things would be helpful. We did talk about the rent reform and we used the example of a flat rent and that if we went to a flat rent, that the resident rent would stay the same for a certain period of time, we did an estimate of three years here. And that during that time period, if they made more money, they they their rent would not go up, which would give them an opportunity to, you know, improve and save and do some things so their rent would not immediately go up. If their income went down, they could apply for a hardship exception and then they could possibly have a rent change if they met the hardship criteria. We also talked a lot about self-sufficiency because one of the key things we wanted to ask the residents is, you know, what can we do that's going to help you become more self-sufficient? What kind of education and training programs? What kind of job readiness and can we can we provide that will help you be able to be more successful in not just getting a job, but we stressed the importance of getting a sustainable job at wages that are truly going to sustain you. So then we said to the residents, you know, we talked about vision, you know, we need to develop what our vision is for our Moving to Work Program. And so we said to the residents, you know, think about what if you got your GED and went to college, you got a good job or you have a job and you got a better, high-paying job and your rent does not increase right away? Can you repair your credit? Can you buy a house? And we just threw out a lot of ideas to get them thinking about, you know, just, you know, close your eyes and think about what what under Moving to Work, we have the flexibility to do all kinds of things. And so what would be the things that you'd like to see us to do? And so then we sent them home with homework and we said, we want you to go back and think about what will truly help you become self-sufficient? Do you need transportation assistance? Do you need affordable childcare? What kind of things can we do to help you become self-sufficient? Ms. Dolores talked about, you know, we have a lot of current programs, but what Moving to Work will do will help us expand on those. And it actually will become a requirement for able-bodied people to participate in some level of self-sufficiency. The other thing we asked them is what kind of things do we, can we do that would help us operate these programs more efficiently? You know, what are the things that you find difficult or burdensome as you have to interact with us on the operation of your program? And we talked a little bit about, you know, the recertification process and do we have to do that every year? Could we go to three years to do recertifications or some other time period? And then finally, the third thing is, is how can we expand housing to be able to serve more families with the same amount of money? And so those were some of the things that we, we sent the 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 residents home and said, you know, we'd like you to go back, we want you We want you to think about these things. Give us some feedback, and then we're going to have another meeting on October 28 at 6:00 p.m., in which we're going to come back to the residents with some suggested ideas, and that will serve as our draft plan that we will pull together. And then, once the draft plan comes together, we will then, excuse me, we will then post it, and it will be posted for 30 days, when we will solicit additional comments from residents. We'll continue to solicit input from the residents. We'll also be soliciting input from other community stakeholders, as well as from, you know, city leaders and other people in the community. And we'll solicit all that feedback, and then we have a public hearing that will be held in November. And then ultimately, we'll bring this back to the board. Our goal is to have it to the board. The final submission to HUD will come before the board at the December board meeting. So, that's kind of it, and I'm going to quit sharing my screen as soon as I figure out how to do that here. There we go. And then we'll open it up for any questions that anyone might have.
I'm going to just say this. I'm excited about this program. Real excited about it.
Yes.
Great work, great work. I mean, this is phenomenal, you know?
Great, great. We're excited as well, and we're going to do a good job. HUD's been very tricky. We have a limit of 15 pages. I'm sorry. We have a limit of actually 10 pages of narrative. It has to have, it has to have a one-page, a one-inch margin on each side and be double-spaced. So, we've got to make our cause in a very few words. So, we will be doing everything we can to try to put forth our vision and our plan. And for what we submit with this next step, it's actually, it's not each individual detail of each activity. It'll be more the types of activities that we think will most benefit our residents. That's what HUD wants us to explain in this next step. So, questions?
Any questions, commissioners?
No, just a comment.
Hold on one second, Cindy. Go ahead.
Cindy, I, from a financial perspective, I think it's fantastic that it gives us flexibility in the use of our money. Is there other, is, I'm always one with metrics and measurements of success. Since we're in Block Two or that rent reform, and it's going to be a five-year study to determine, you know, how the program went, what will we be looking for for measurements of success as a commissioner? MTW is implemented. Obviously, we'll be able to move money around. But as a commissioner, what do we, what should we be looking for to say, hey, this program's going well or working during the five-year test period?
There are, HUD has what they call standardized metrics. And so, for each of the statutory goals, there are some very specific metrics that we will be required to track and report to HUD. And I'll just give you an example. If we went to, for example, triennial recertifications, and we recertified staff, or we recertified residents every three years instead of every year. The standardized metrics that HUD has for that type of an activity is, what is your reduced time in staff hours? What is your reduced dollars? What does that translate into reduced administrative cost? Because instead of having to see every resident every year, you've now reduced it. Therefore, you have less staff that are going to have to dedicate to doing recertifications. So, therefore, you have less staff hours and less staff time. And so, HUD has very specific metrics. And when we, when we, when we design a specific activity, once we're selected and we get to the point where we're designing the specific activities, we have to be able to tell HUD which of their standardized metrics apply to those activities. So, the board will have very specific measurements that will be provided.
Thank you.
Sure. Great question. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. This is Commissioner Jigges. Again, how you doing?
Good. How you doing, ma'am?
I'm fine. With this initiative, would you be working with any lobbyists to advance PRHA's application?
I'm going to throw that one back to Mr. Bland. I do not work directly with any lobbyists, no. I'm a technical consultant, so I would be preparing the technical piece and submitting that to HUD.
To answer that question, no, we will not be working with lobbyists. HUD would kind of frown upon that.
Thank you for the answer.
Yes.
Any other commissioners? Vice Mayor, anything?
I think that's a great program. I was thinking about all of the options there, and I didn't know if there was any partnership with our Department of Social Services with some of these opportunities that are being shared with the residents.
I think there'll be a lot of opportunities, and Dolores spoke with the residents last night about, you know, those opportunities and the types of addition, the expansion that we can do of the existing services that we'll be able to provide to residents through this program. A big part of it is partnerships.
Delos, you want to talk about some of those partnerships?
Yes, and Vice Mayor, we actually have a, what we call a program coordinating committee that oversees, that works with us with our family self-sufficiency program. And with, so we will use that body, and the Department of Social Services is a partner on that body. We, so they work with us, and we try to work in combination, because let's say childcare, someone needs childcare. They may have maxed out their social security benefits, but they can get an additional childcare because they're working, they're participating in this program, and Social Services will give them an additional year of childcare assistance. So, we work very closely with Social Services, because sometimes we may need transportation, and they may have access to bus tickets, bus passes. So, we will get that, because a lot of, a lot of our people are the same clients. So, when we're working with the same clients, we definitely partner.
Exactly. And the VEC as well for the jobs.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Those are my, those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, thank you all very much. It's been good to see you all virtually today, and I look forward to the day we can see each other in person again. Take care, everybody.
Me too.
Thank you. Alrighty. Seems like our next item goes into closed session. The next four items. All right, we're going to move down to reports, September significant reports. Mr. Bland, I'll let you take over.
Commissioner, in your pocket were the September significant report. After looking at it, do you have any questions or concerns in reference to that report? If not, you can always reach me anytime if you have any additional questions in reference to that report. If you have nothing today, that does not preclude you from reaching out to me later if you choose to.
Got you.
I just have one. The resident advisory board hasn't met in a couple of months because of COVID. Is there any way we can help them with a Zoom meeting or something? It just, that RAB is just one way we get feedback of how we're doing.
Okay.
And I just thought if there's any way we could bring them out. I understand they don't want to meet in person, but is there any way we can help them with a virtual meeting?
We do, yeah, okay.
To answer Commissioner London's question, we will reach out to them and see if we can set up something Zoom, if we can bring them together for that, and then report back to you at the November meeting.
Got you. Next order of business is still on you, Mr. Bland, department updates.
Actually, I just, I think I mailed out a few items. You got the MTW flyer. Cindy kind of went over that a few minutes ago. We're doing very well. A lot of housing authorities are having a problem with leasing up units during this time. I will say that actually, we're in good shape. We're leasing up our units as they become available. We're turning our units around in a timely manner. We don't have units that have been baking for five, six, seven, eight months like a lot of housing authorities. So, the staff in the field are doing a tremendous job. As well as the Section 8 folks, we're doing a tremendous job. I don't think you have been receiving any calls from any of our residents in Section 8 of public housing saying that we are not being responsive to their concerns or need, and because we realize that we want to be available for our residents that we are serving as well as the general public. And that is all I have. Now, I'm sorry, November 3, we will be, we will close for the election, because the state and the city will be closed. They have made that official holiday, so the housing authority will be closed on that date also. And the last thing I would say, vote, vote, vote. Go and vote. And the other thing, the other thing too is make sure that you encourage people that have not completed the census to go ahead and complete the census, because every dollar will count coming into the community.
That's right. My numbers go up, and it helps us as a district.
I think we want to break that 100,000 mark, I believe, in residents. Am I right, Vice Mayor?
That is absolutely correct, and we want to be able to get that money in from the federal government. If we are over 100,000, we get more money. Right now, we are at a stagnant place. And I want to also, also throw in there, if you have residents, you all know, in your housing communities that are not registered to vote, the deadline was extended to today at 5:00.
Thank you so much. Awesome.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, though, commissioners, any comments? Okay, there being none. Only comment I got is keep up the great work. Okay, though, public speakers, PRHA allows up to five minutes speaks. Do we have any speakers? Welcome, Commissioner Wicks. Glad you got on.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I apologize for being late, but I couldn't log on to my computer. Warren is trying to help me out now, so I'm on my phone.
Awesome. Glad you made it.
Thank you.
Alrighty. We have no public speakers. All right, Resolution 2020-40, resolution of intent to move and close session. Resolution 2020-40, resolution of intent to move and close session, meeting, meeting, closed meeting. Whereas the Virginia Freedom Mission Act provides that the Board of Commissioners can meet in a closed meeting for the discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body as set forth in Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia as amended. The matters for discussion are the disposition of real property located at Shea Terrace, Vicry Boulevard, Columbia Court, and London Street. And whereas the Virginia Freedom Mission Act provides that the Board of Commissioners can meet in closed meeting for consultation regarding the actual or probable litigation with legal counsel and briefings by staff, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the public body as set forth in Section 2.2-311A7 of the Code of Virginia as amended. The legal consultation pertains to probable litigation involving an harassment claim. And therefore, be it resolved, that in compliance with the Virginia Freedom Mission Act and above reference section of the Virginia Code, the Board of Commissioners shall reconvene in a closed meeting on October 15, 2020, for the discussion of the disposition of publicly held real property pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A3. The disposition of publicly held real property. Oh, I said that again. All right. Station of a legal matter pursuant to Section 2.3711A7. Chair, I need a motion to go into closed session.
I have a motion that we go into closed session.
Second.
Second, by the secretary.
Commissioner Jigges?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts? Did we lose Commissioner? Okay, Commissioner Wicks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lalande?
Yes.
And Chair Smith?
Yes.
All right, y'all know the proceedings are logged out, logged back in, all that good stuff. See y'all in a minute.